Your speakers are muted. Not sure if I want to do that.
I'm on TV.
Okay. Okay, now the issue that I have had is getting this to be any bigger than this because of this. And what we did was...
I present.
Hey.
And that made it that much bigger, but still left us with this.
Not too bad. You want to see if you... This is the screen that the council members will see.
Now, I thought printed copies were coming too. Do we?
I've got, yeah, I've got printed copies. Yeah.
Do you want to make some copies for me?
Yeah. Um, no, I've got eight.
Okay.
Um.
Well, I need something doodle.
Actually, there's something doodle. Uh, not too bad.
It's called a ring.
Oh, yes, I have a ring. Hang on.
I want to move the dog.
I have only been with a dog now for, ooh, three and a half years, something, about three and a half. Yeah. But I've worked other places.
I've been working in a few cities, including Beaufort.
Yeah, I was there for seventeen years. Yeah, that was a long time.
Middleton there?
It was.
Middleton?
Yeah, Margaret Middleton. Did you work with Margaret?
No, I hired her husband.
Oh, you did? Okay. Oh, all right. Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, he was a military guy.
Yep. I hired her husband when I was Sherwood there.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Oh, I think, yeah, that's right. I think he was in, yeah, he was in public service too. So you were Sherwood.
To my concern is, so I go to all the dots and you lose the presentation, okay? I was trying to make that full screen, and sometimes we could do it.
Positively early today, Todd, right?
Uh?
You're positively early today.
I walked. It sounds like I don't want to be late.
It was miserable. It was miserable, spot before we talked. It's too hot.
You've earned a sweat coat and another stitch coat. That's what it is now.
Right here. I forgot real shoes. I can put them on the dinosaur eyes or...
Your socks.
All right, great, thank you.
Of course. Well, that's the worst. Hi, how are you?
I am Scott.
I am Scott.
I am Scott.
Is that what she's calling you?
Yeah, I'm Scott, yes.
Hi, I'm Madra. How are you?
Oh, more paper, more paper, more paper.
Definitely reading.
Yes, exactly. Rams, Rams.
We're around here.
And, uh...
We're around, we're around.
Is anybody sitting over there or is that... Uh, no.
Uh, you were sort of beside one of those two chairs.
Is that me in there or...
Yeah. Yeah.
I will sit here if you like. Yeah, I have this one and I've got a, I've got a nice color. Oh, I have one with me. Oh, you have one? Oh, you have bigger. Okay.
You didn't even know.
You do.
Um, services, I sent you an email about services scheduling.
Okay, yeah, we're scheduled for the already. Got you that.
Hey, man. Oh, I have.
Yeah, cities are used, so.
I have turned down maybe city by...
Um, I have a direct contract here.
In Oak Junction.
Are you sure you haven't taken less than a year?
Well, they asked, we have a month of it. They just want, they want to watch.
Direct contract with Sherwood Carlton.
I have five, two clients.
The entity is really doing the city either. For me, it's ended by my.
We should do something.
As, as those meetings arise, and especially since Florida has been the Aurora. Yeah.
Oh!
No.
Who are shut? I get time conversations.
I think we were just talking about you, but fully that.
You will be the first or last. I'm going to be super crass. Oh, this one.
Something crass.
Yeah.
I picked this up.
A bunch.
A lot of people.
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's it.
I need first. How about, no more than... He's the one in charge.
Yeah, set a timer. Each person.
Scott, I'll come to next to you, so we're facing the same way.
Five minutes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Go. Go on, take, I don't, I want to relax. What is that, what is that word?
We've been saying it in class.
Oh, nice. I think I'm trying to set up for a yard sale and I have nothing. I have signs and some scribbles and a couple, five items of price maybe. I don't even know what the question is without.
But they see your hands.
And that's from a zoo. I'm just going to start seeing. I'm just going to tag it as I throw it out. What is it, O B L? Or best offer? Yeah. Or it's just... Three. It's already been listed. Well, I have a bunch of resell stuff, so some of it is like, I need a lower price because like vintage. Some of it is not. It's just like, yeah, my dog chewed it if you want it. Well, you're aware this time. She's not going to.
Or, uh...
Oh. Oh, is that going to set a timer? Like yell at people?
Yeah, I like to talk.
My feet are that hard.
Worse than I am, like, you gotta go.
You'll back me up? No, I backed it up. Oh, it's like...
I mean, worse or better, depending on your perspective. I have no issue criticizing people for taking too long. So, one thing we did have is positive. I've got the last few years of the chickens.
On that website?
The website.
Yay!
One thing to give.
What happened? We finally have the agenda minutes online.
The agenda minutes, last few years on here.
Yes, so we can finally read that.
Oh, that's fantastic. Yes.
See, I was the person that would read them. We were go, I am the greatest. I was, and I wasn't. Why haven't you been on City Council before? You read it.
Because it's more fun to complain about the city council than to be honest.
I don't complain. If you're complaining, you're part of the problem, not the solution. I like to complain though. Uh, you have to have this.
I did.
When nothing is done. All right.
It's, uh, what are you talking about?
When's your kid graduate college?
Um.
Were you saying she was coming up? Is it?
Yeah, she's gonna be going into her junior year. But she is some number of classes ahead, but I don't know exactly how she is.
She isn't one?
No, we also have a baby that's going into... We have two.
Oh, I'm back though. I must have recorded you for the memorial that I forgot.
I didn't know.
Just to drive my school.
Until many months after.
Just spinning in circles. I'm like, are you kidding me? You know that shut off everything? Now you need to go? I had the door open. So we have like five years, seven, four years. So is your wife? I was going to, oh, we're going to be excited. Or did you go to drive it, or did they go to drive it's?
Well, we did make them both go to driver's ed, which was really good.
How expensive is that?
Not bad, like four hundred bucks.
Okay. I know often in Washington they're required to accept.
The driver's ed.
Power works day?
The work of that program is partially subsidized. But it's good.
Some music, some power fires?
The microphones are on. I went into my office to test it. The microphones are on. Somebody's barbecuing something. I thought I heard somebody talking about.
And now we're...
But I just wanted, I just wanted to test.
It's kind of like VJ, like some neighbor.
VJ.
I don't know. Numbers, letters, things.
I'm tired, man.
When does school start?
Monday.
This coming up Monday?
Yeah.
What? On the Monday afternoon, Labor Day?
I called you a loser.
Okay, why would they start school and then have a Sunday weekend?
So our, it's teachers for next week, and then second is sixth grade in personal orientation, and then...
Right.
I was going to say something crass again. I love my job. I like it much more.
I would be in prison if I had your job.
But Travis screwed up on all the IAs.
Oh.
Days, like they gave us a calendar for the next year's schedules, working Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week. They forgot to schedule us for Thursday for open house, so now we have to split like half a day Monday.
As I said.
Thursday. And I'm like, actually sucks because I just basically go again, it's not happening, house night.
Oh, Laura's saying, I'm like, dang it.
I'm like, right off the bat, you guys are going to have a game of like two games, the little late ready guys. No, they've already had practice. They've been doing double days.
Yeah, a lot.
She's already had like six practices, because they didn't do double A guess Tuesday or today.
The question is, you try to, if you want something stronger.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you. Oh, I don't need one more. Thank you.
I'm enjoying it.
I'm glad I'm in class. I'd rather do your lunch drive. I make it easier than... Do you remember the handle? The whole is. Trashy, trashy, dirty. Valentine's or something. It's amazing. So I went to buy that for myself.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Good morning.
I'm in a training class for five hours today, so it was on silent. I think I took it off silent when I left, so that you would call back. I never, we always have, I never have something special, especially with kids. Dad, always want to, hey. It's a, it's a whole new, less stressful world. It's very... New set. I like it.
Yeah, yesterday. They, they're, doctors, they're standing back next to me. Thank you, VJ. Is it Salem, Bethany Bryant or Portland? Salem or Portland? Uh, my primary is at Salem, but I usually do old stuff up for them. Makes it so where I... It took my life like seven years to get transferred from the Portland, I think, to Salem. Really hot. Wow, that's, that's crazy. Uh, oh, and also not that surprising.
Right. Yeah. And we were talking about not surprising, you know, contact, not surprising.
Well, I love, I love, a few months ago, it's like, oh, you got a, and you also got a minute. And I show up and I sit in the chair, you know, it's key, you got a lot of like, what are you doing on the screen? Actually, when I work from home, I'm like, I, I, I just work from home. I can see, you know, oh, no, you got to, you know, first day of the dream, but just like, I can do these. I'm also...
Why don't you just say, you have to be here physically for me to go there, sure. Tell the truth.
Interesting question.
Oh, yeah.
I'm grateful.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Since January.
We've had so much better taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so he's getting a hundred and ten percent better treatment taxes at the hospital. Yeah.
I live in Salem, so it's close. Oh, what are you doing? That's from my office. Living, living across the dry chem. Does it go someplace?
They got locked out, like it wouldn't allow me, because you first sign up, they tell you change your password. And then, like, check your password. Okay, well, it's supposed to change your password, not supposed to have a temporary password that everybody knows. To have what you want, and then so when I change it, it's like, why am I watching my head too?
Save on my phone.
I just want to come in, log in on your computer.
That's...
I'll let this login. Yeah, I got the deep.
That's us, sorry.
They had to like, I had one, they were asking me to sync my computers, and they could lock me up, so I just changed it.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM, August 21st. Call is city council. Show. Door. Let's start with the roll call, please. Director of the left. Councilman. Undergus.
Here.
Councilman Petro Reyk.
Here.
Council president, Bruce Wright.
Here.
Councilman, Councilman Jessica.
Here.
And Councilman, he was cool.
There.
All president accounted for. By whatever we like to stand for, bless allegiance. Let's only just consider the Latin of the United States of America. Consider the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Actually, Rick, if you don't mind, I'm just going to take the mouse over here.
Fine.
And then Scott and I.
Riley Mouse, be on your side, remember? Now, that's a power play.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we start this work session, I'd like to go ahead and have a moment of silence for a former city manager. Mr. Marsden, you would mind me? I'd like to thank everybody for that. And Rick, would we please get started?
Mayor and council, we had scheduled a work session tonight, and we have a forty-two minute video about the different types of public hearings. And we learned all sorts of different legalistic stuff about executive sessions and special sessions and things like that. However, we have recently had a shift in our agenda upcoming city council meeting, in which the council is going to aim to serve as a planning commission for two planning related activities that require council review, council deliberation, council consideration, and council decision, including independent special hearings for both of those two planning commission events. So, uh, Tuesday of this week, um, I sort of did a one-eighty. We went from council planning type training activities scheduled for tonight to planning commission related. Now, I also wanted to bring in a specialist um, as it relates to, because, for a couple reasons. One, for the planning commission's meeting, there's a staff report which sort of presents one side of the story. Applicants side, there's a staff side. I'm a member of staff, not exactly neutral. Tonight, we're not talking about any projects. Not talking about any planning activities per se. Events, applicants. Tonight is about process, procedures. Oregon land use laws and how we administer them, the quasi judicial environment is a different role than your role in capacity as a city councillor, council president, or mayor. So the goal tonight is for you to have the opportunity to understand that role, that responsibility, and be a lot more comfortable having to do that in the middle of your council meeting to reach those. Because that is what you're going to be called upon to do. You're going to be called upon to serve as judges. Rules are totally different. And so what we have tonight is a planner who has not recently done work for us if ever, um, who I really wanted to bring in, so that we're not talking about Travis, we're not talking about any projects you may have heard of that's going on in Travis. We're here to talk about your role, your responsibilities, what you are held accountable to do and pass the capacity as a planning commission. It is a different role. And serves as both. So, uh, without further ado, we know our city attorney, who will be present tonight and two weeks from tonight. So there's a little bit of consistency of what you hear tonight and learn tonight, as well as what you will be doing two weeks from tonight. And Scott, Scott, you want to introduce yourself and say a few kind words about yourself?
Certainly, thank you. Thank you, Rick. Uh, yeah, my name is Scott White, planner. Worked for a number of cities, uh, through thirty-five years. I'm partially out the doors. Tired, but, uh, I do work for a couple of small cities, so very much. Uh, so I, uh, uh, been a part of the public planning process for many years, processed a number of applications, subdivisions, things that, uh, you'll see if you haven't seen it before, they come through time. Uh, very important, uh, to know about due process, and as Rick mentioned, uh, it's kind of a, a special uh, due process as it relates to land use in, in the state. Uh, so, uh, without further ado, we have what, uh, one of these lines here as part of our presentation. This is a training. And, uh, Tyler and I are the sort of tag team things, uh, so we don't get tired. Uh, I know Tyler pretty well. Uh, I'm also a contract planner, uh, with the city of Carlton, a smaller station. Tyler also works as a city attorney, so I know him in that capacity for the last, what, three years or so. Various projects that have come before, uh, just using this quick example there. Uh, so, um, yeah, we, we have here a, a training that we put together that's pretty good. We hope it'll be sort of fun. We have, let's go to the next slide. Work that line? I think it's just really an overview here of what might be able to do all this under sixty minutes. Uh, but, uh, yeah, Tyler will start off. And I'll be talking about, uh, meeting types generally legislative versus quasi judicial. And also all of the disclosures that are necessary at the onset of a, of a meeting, which ones, uh, things you have to disclose for legislative versus quasi judicial. Uh, and then, um, Tyler will answer some questions if you have specific questions about that. Uh, I will be talking about the, the staff report, a staff reports. Reports of the staff uh, for, for public hearing, uh, and just due process. And then at the end, uh, what we'll do, uh, we have sort of, uh, oh, just a, a group interactive, uh, exercises, examples, these scenarios that have come up, uh, through time, and, uh, just, uh, you get to play the, the role of the chair and, um, just, you know, we'll say, here's the scenario, and how would you respond to that? So hopefully that would kind of fun. Anyways, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler.
Thank you, Scott. So... So, uh, most of Travis is unique, uh, in that we don't have a separate planning commission, which Jim and Holly kind of touched on in their training. So when I inevitably slip up and keep referring to you all as the planning commission, just know that I also need the city council when I come to Travis. Uh, so, uh, planning commissions, uh, primarily hold two types of hearings. Uh, the first is legislative hearings, um, which is when we are amending the municipal code, felony code. Um, generally those changes cover, uh, uh, significant geographic area, not limited to a discrete parcel or set of parcels. Um, and it is discretionary, so you don't have to make any decisions. So Frank and I worked really hard and totally updated the entire development code. There's some other steps we'd have to do, but you guys could look at and say, actually, nothing. We like what we have. We're not going to take any action, and that's totally fine within your legislative discretion to do that. For quasi judicial hearings, um, you all are applying the criteria contained within our current development code to a particular set of facts, either on the initial application or on an appeal from a staff level decision. Um, and in that situation, in quasi judicial, uh, situations, you are acting as the judge and jury essentially for that land use action. Um, when, uh, so in addition to being discretionary, uh, for legislative matters that are coming before the council, conflict or, uh, ex parte contacts, which we'll talk about more, uh, later on, but you don't, don't have to disclose any ex parte contacts. That's not a, uh, concern in the legislative hearing. Um, you are still required to disclose any conflicts of interest or potential, potential conflict of interest, uh, that you might have. And like I said before, no decision is required, so you can choose that or not. Uh, with a quasi judicial hearing, um, it's limited to a particular or small number of property owners. Um, we are bound in making that decision to the actual criteria, so we can't just say we're going to do whatever we want. This feels right, or this feels wrong. We strive to have clear and objective criteria within the code. We apply the code, so theoretically, we should always be getting to the right answer, um, instead of more discretionary policy decision, um, that you would be coming up with in a legislative setting. You also have to make a decision, like I said, in a quasi-judicial setting, moving on to the next slide. In Oregon, land use processes and procedures are governed by strict time constraints, so the, um, unless the applicant voluntarily stops the clock, we, we have an obligation to provide a final decision to the applicant within one hundred and twenty days of the application being deemed complete. So we can't just sit on something for years and years in lieu of actual, uh, action being taken on it. If we do not, um, get to a final decision within the one hundred and twenty day period, the applicant has a right to, uh, petition for, uh, writ of mandamus in circuit court, which means the judge would approve the application as presented. And we are taken out of the process. And, uh, we like to avoid that, um, if at all possible, and, um, it is something that is always on the planner's mind. I'll be honest with you, it's less on the city attorney's mind because the city attorney relies on the planner to know uh, those particular dates. That's a little bit less complicated here in Jervis because oftentimes when a city does have a planning commission, the planning commission hears something first, it can be appealed to the city council. And then the there is an additional, uh, appeal opportunity. Here in Jervis, we kind of go straight up to the top level right away, so we don't have that intermediary appeals process that we have to account for when we're talking about the timing. Land use processes in Oregon, um, are governed by a statute that I can pitch out for all of you if you wanted to, but, uh, the process, uh, is meant to be fair, uh, we provide due process to the applicants. We make those, just like all of our decisions, we make those decisions in public and applicants are entitled to a decision um, that is made by an unbiased council or commission, um, that is also free of any conflicts of interest. The role of the chair, Mayor Wagner, there is a pre-hearing statement, um, Holly will be preparing a script for you, Mayor, Ms. Perkins, and Mrs. Smith. It will also, that script will also include, um, specific questions regarding disclosure of potential biases or, uh, conflicts of interest or, uh, ex parte contacts. Also within that, uh, script, uh, it will sort of lay out the overall process for the hearing. I, I think that we kind of went through that with the zone change, but it was a little funky. Um, so I'll work with Holly to make sure for all future meetings, we'll have an excellent script and nobody will be confused about the process. We also, uh, provide the opportunity for, um, public hearing, uh, a public hearing where we, uh, take public testimony. This is slightly different from public comment in that any public testimony becomes part of the official record. So it is not just a comment that somebody is making that we can hear or not, or whatever. Um, any public testimony is sort of part of the whole package that makes up the record that, uh, that's what we look to, to make the decision. Um, and nothing outside of the record should be considered. And just like all of our other, um, obligations, uh, when we're talking about planning, land use matters, Oregon public meetings, law applies. Into the fun stuff, and I think for our training purposes, very important, this evening, so one of the, uh, potential disclosures that you all would need to make is, uh, any ex parte contact. And so that is any contact, communication, information, um, that you receive that wasn't presented in this room after the hearing has been opened, so, um, let's say approving Dollar General coming in. If you guys drive by the site every day, it's maybe not strictly speaking, um, an ex parte contact, but you can disclose, I drive by that site every day, so I'm aware, independent of what's told to me, the site conditions surrounding that property. If you read on social media that your neighbors are so happy that a Dollar General's coming in, or that they're not happy, or the parking lot should be bigger, smaller, whatever, um, any of that information is ex parte contact. Neighbor coming by and knocking on your door, or chasing you down to the grocery store, even if you don't engage with them, they say anything to you, that is an ex parte contact that should be disclosed at the time of the hearing. Um, roughly, you should disclose the content of the communication or what was communicated to you. And what's really important about that is, um, the impact on you and your decision-making ability based on that information. So if you receive that information, you're like, yeah, I heard all this stuff, but I am basing my decision tonight on the facts, I don't have any bias, go ahead, just.
So you said after the process starts, so it's supposed to have been two months ago? Do I still need a, for, I was curious?
No, uh, for the purposes of, uh, quasi-judicial land use hearing information, before an application is in and you're aware of it, would likely not be considered ex parte contact because it's not sort of a general complaint at that point, not about the process. Generally, when we're talking about, um, conflicts of interest, ex parte contact, um, or any potential bias, though, if there's a question about it, you guys can always talk to Rick before something comes before the council, you can always ask me about it. Um, my general advice is if you feel like it's something that should be disclosed, disclose it. Just because you have something to disclose doesn't mean you can't participate in the process. Um, and it avoids any issues in the future for that information coming out.
Did you generalize the contact itself for the person, say who it was, instead of just saying the residence?
Uh, if, if who it was was somehow relevant for the information, um, I, I think generally, the specific identity of the individual is not as relevant as the content of the communication. I reserve my right to change the answer based on any questions you might have in the future.
Right, well, I also say, like, even if it, let's say, going back to Dollar General, but you could say, for example, it's like, let me employ a Dollar General, you want to say the person's name, just give the context of why it's why it's, right.
So one of the questions that the chair, um, will ask, uh, the council when they're happening as a planning commission, uh, is does anybody have any ex parte contact, uh, to disclose? Like we're talking about, um, the report will roughly contain, uh, summary of the information that was learned, and the, the context surrounding it. It is an appealable issue, it's substantive error if there is some form of ex parte contact that is not disclosed. Um, so that gives additional appeal rights to the applicant who they're displeased with the outcome. And there was ex parte contact, of which they are aware that was not disclosed. We also, when we're going through ex parte contact disclosures and conflict of interest disclosures, and I'll make, I believe Holly would, would have included this already, but we also ask if there are any members of the public who, uh, challenge the disclosures, so if somebody feels like there was some type of conflict or ex parte disclosure that was not disclosed, we sort of open the floor for that, just to really try and get all of, all of the potential issues. Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, you lean forward with that attention. Can I eat some candy, man? And if there, uh, an interested party, uh, must raise the objection before the record is closed, so after we hear all the testimony from the proponent from ourselves and we're getting, getting ready to deliberate, close the record, if nobody has objected to participation or disclosures, uh, they have missed their opportunity. And just want to again mention a point here, um, just because you have, uh, had an ex parte contact does not disqualify any of you from participating or deliberating in the discussion and voting at the hearing. You just have to disclose it, and again, make, make sure that you can truthfully say you, um, are impartial, don't have any bias, um, and are basing your decision based on the facts and record, uh, for the commission slash council. The other question that Brian will be, Mayor Wagner, trying to get semi-formal, um, uh, relate to conflict of interests. Um, and these definitions are from the Oregon, the government ethics provisions within, uh, Oregon revised statutes. Um, an actual con, actual conflict of interest means any action or any decision or recommendation by a person acting in a capacity as a public official, the effect of which would be to the private pecuniary benefit or detriment of a person or the person's relative or any business with which the person or a relative of the person is associated. So pretty expansive. To try and simplify it, uh, if you were the owner of the Dollar General and you had applied to get approval to build a Dollar General, that would be an actual conflict of interest if your spouse was the owner of well, or anybody involved in the construction planning of that project. Or if you owned a business, or your spouse owned a business, was in any way going to benefit from that decision, um, that is an actual conflict of interest, and at that point, you have to recuse yourself and not participate.
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, it was peculiar.
Money, financial.
Thank you.
It's a little bit more broad technically than just financial, but that there's some value there.
That's the interest.
So there are also situations where the conflict of interest is potential, so it's possible that, um, you could benefit from a decision, but it's not, you're not as directly related to the particular, uh, matter at hand. Um, so same definition as before, except instead of would be a, there would be a benefit, so there could be a benefit. So if it's possible that through some chain of events, your decision-making up here could end up, reasonably leading to a benefit, um, that should be disclosed. Um, you know, we don't have to play the game like butterfly effect, eventually doesn't mean employers coming in, they're going to improve the streets, and because the streets are better, I'm wearing on my car less, or something like that. Um, has to be more, more tangible, um, not mayhem, essentially. Um, there are some exceptions to conflict of interests, um, that otherwise would fit the definition. If, uh, you are required to be engaged in some type of profession uh, in order to be qualified to be on the commission that you're on, which doesn't apply for the city council. But that would be, um, an exception. The more common exception that often comes up is a class exception, so if we were, let's say, undertaking, uh, legislative amendment to the development code that impacts what you can do on single-family resident, single-family dwelling unit, or R1 homes, um, presumably some of you own those properties, and so you inherently would be impacted by the decision that's being made, but because it applies to all of that zone of property, and it's not targeting your specific properties, it is not a conflict of interest that prevents you from participating in that decision, even though technically under the rules, it does present as a conflict of interest. Uh, another exception is membership, um, in or on the board of directors of a nonprofit corporation that is taxed, that is impacted. And I really appreciate Scott's note here that, uh, we strongly recommend consulting your city attorney if you have any questions about these prior to your hearing. So regarding disclosure of the potential conflicts, and what, I shouldn't use the word potential because yeah. So you should, in the event that you have a potential conflict of interest that is not an actual conflict of interest, when the mayor asks for the disclosure, you should disclose what the potential conflict is, so what the financial interest is, who is it, whether it's yours, family members, et cetera. And you can, uh, still participate in the process and circumstance, as long as you can truthfully say you will, uh, make an unbiased decision. Uh, for an actual conflict of interest, um, it should be disclosed early on, immediately before any participation, and you should recuse yourself and not participate in your councillor, commissioner capacity. So we don't have any right to say you can't provide public comments in that bit, but you have to do it from down there, not up here.
Just because, uh, I know it's what's most pressing for our community right now, just because it's the big disemployer in Jervis. Um, the, the employees of Jervis School District and our former employees constitute conflict of interest.
Should have been more ready for that question, knowing that this training is happening. Um, I don't believe it's an actual conflict of interest.
Right, is it worth mentioning?
I, yes, it should be disclosed. Uh, the other, uh, disclosure is any, uh, bias, uh, so any prejudice or prejudgment of the facts to such a degree that an official is incapable of making an objective decision based on the narrative. This is a little bit less tangible than conflict of interest, um, or ex parte contacts because it's in your own hand. But as long as you can truthfully say, even though I might have concerns about a potential project, um, that I'm going to look at the record by the criteria fairly and objectively, um, without bias, and that's how I will make the decision, um, then your personal biases are not they don't require disclosure. If you just get so mad about Dollar General that you cannot act reasonably whenever everybody's talking about Dollar General, then in that case, the bias should result in a refusal.
Your wife won't stop shocking your Dollar General.
That sounds like a private civil matter. You two and Dr. Gilch should be. I might be called the councillor, but I'm not that kind of guy. Uh, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission has, um, some additional information resources if that's something that you all want to talk about. And just before I hand this over to Scott, I have an example of a prior script that, um, Holly prepared, so just to give an example of the questions that, um, Mayor will, will ask at a quasi-judicial hearing, um, so he'll ask if there are any objections to the notice that was published, assuming a notice had to be published. Um, pray that you guys will have an objection to that because not really involved in that part of the process. Mayor would also ask if any member of the audience challenged, wishes to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter. I have not heard that kind of objection, but if it was going to happen, it would probably be in service, just because you guys are my favorite special company. Mayor would also ask if any member of the city council wishes to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias. And so this is where I think when we get to these questions, Mayor, we can just sort of informally poll along the way. If anybody has anything to say, they can make their disclosures. And if you want, we can break up the questions between concepts of interest and bias. If that will make it more clear. We just need to make sure we ask about all of them. Also, we'll request the council disclose any site visits or other ex parte contacts. And then we will ask if any member of the audience wishes to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures for any member of the city council. So we don't want to get caught not disclosing something that we should have. Well, we never want to get caught doing that, but we especially don't want to get caught on the record, in the room, without me knowing, while we irritated with you. And that won't be good for anybody. So those are the questions that we will ask. Like I said, Dr. Rick, talk to me before our hearing on September 4th, if you'd like to discuss those more specifically. I did, there is one line on the slide that I missed regarding ex parte disclosures, but discussions with staff are not ex parte. So you can talk to Rick or myself, and then it's not something that has to be disclosed at that time. I'm going to skip over talking about that, I think Scott, so we can move on. So after all of that, are there any outstanding questions? So happy, especially Jesse.
Yay!
So happy. Now we get to hand it over to Scott.
We can do some jumping jacks if you want. Seven bending stretch. Okay, so let's see, let's go over to the next slide here. It's just this.
Yeah.
You said 20, I said 30, it's the number 30 up there.
So does it say 20? Oh, I, yeah. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about staff reports, the structure there, especially with quasi judicial, like staff reports there, we are required to identify the applicable approval criteria, anything that is really relevant to the scope of the project, what the applicant has submitted to the city, certainly identify what that application is. It sometimes it's a combined application, both a conditional use with a design review application, so. So certainly some background information is appropriate with a staff report. And then also the options for decision making. So Tyler mentioned with the quasi judicial application, you must make a decision, whether that decision is to approve, approve with some conditions, or deny, or deny. Sometimes denial is difficult, especially if the approval criteria speaks to clear objective, it's maybe something that, clear objective standards, they call for everything to be blue. And if the applicant has a project that says, hey, look at, this is blue, that it's really difficult to deny that project. But anyways, so that's what a staff report has in a nutshell. It does have the findings, and that is to substantiate the, what the applicant has done there. A lot of times it is the applicant that produces a written narrative response to approval criteria, standards in the code. They do that because it is truly the applicant's burden of proof to substantiate what, how their project meets that. And if you as a quasi judicial body here feel that you need additional clarifications, there is time in the process of things there to ask the applicant, okay, I'm uncertain about it, you weren't very clear about that. Certainly staff sort of prompts the applicant to do that. So you don't have something that is incomplete or missing. So I work with applicants a lot, and very often I'll deem an application incomplete early on when it comes in as an answer to the applicable approval criteria and the standards. Be very clear, so, but they need to submit to the city in order to have a complete application. And I'll respond accordingly. Sometimes I've, in some cases, I've deemed an application incomplete like three times. And then people are asking, where's that application? Well, still, still, I'm still working on it. So anyway, when it comes to a body that, I don't commission the city council, yeah, the plans that you receive should be complete, they should be answering to the approval criteria. So findings is one thing. And the other thing, the staff report for quasi judicial decision, it typically has conditions of approval and generally that is intended to make sure that what is shown before you, what is approved, is executed appropriately, that they go forward with what is approved.
Yeah, the right.
Oh, the right one. All right, so findings in a staff report, why that is important, essential for support of the decision and for review on appeal too. So it is something that I think a lot of pop out if, if something goes as far as the land use board of appeals. So this is the, city council is the final decision making body of the city. So you would prepare after a hearing, written decisions issued. And then there is a time period for which the applicant can, or anybody with standing, if somebody spoke right over here and said something, they also, they're entitled to notice the decision. And there is a period to which they have under state law, I guess procedures to appeal the decision further to the land use board of appeals. And so that's what Luba is, if you hear Luba, of course, that is the short for the land use state, land use board of appeals is a body of free people and they meet regularly. And a lot of decisions that they make for appeal of city decisions are shown on their website. But that's what as a staff planner, I keep in mind is to ensure that Tyler, as your city attorney, is able to legally defend the city's decision. But it's a lot of, it's a lot of findings to support the decision of the city. And so if there's any comment, there's that last bullet there, quasi judicial review, if you notice as a decision body, if there's any conflict, a conflict to criteria, it's important to identify these. And a lot of times we do that as part of the staff report, we can see something that is a conflict, we will mention such and say, well, this is then the past interpretation of such. So that's what I wanted to state about findings. Let's go on to the next one here, findings related to conditions. So one of the things we do a lot behind the scenes here before an application is brought aboard the final commission city council, we do work with applicants quite a bit with various things to which we can and cannot by law condition a project for. Sometimes an applicant will put in certain things like the street improvements, do certain things that are right for, for the development to go forward. A street needs to be fully improved with curb sidewalk better and all that wonderful stuff. Yeah, sometimes applicants realize this and it might be something that's shown on the traffic study to justify, and we have this, we need to do this. Other times applicants don't do that. And it's a matter of, you know, the city says, well, we really want you to put in those street improvements. We really, really want that, think it will be helpful. There are limits to which the city can do that. There's a very famous case, the city of Tigerd years ago required a condition on a retail store was, they wanted a pathway just along the flood, flood plain next to this retail business. And they did not explain the nexus and proportionality to key words that you may, may hear, to, to which that project had a connection to, what the impact was. So that one, that case went all the way to the United States Supreme Court. And ever since then, it is something that we look at very carefully, the degree to which we can apply some sort of exaction or dedication of property for something. It is, again, these key words nexus, meaning connection and rough proportionality is the, you know, is it, is it what you're requiring roughly proportional of the impact that causes? So cases kind of, it depends on what it is, but it is something that sometimes we just can't condition it to the extent that you may, may want it to be. And this is exactly when one Tyler says something as well, that kind of says, yeah, I don't think I can legally defend an improvement of it all the way down to the end of the street, especially when other properties have around, have a ability to develop in the future. They are giving, it can be as well, those properties, they can develop their respective street improvement along the street. And anyways, just kind of getting an example of that. So action options, Tyler mentioned, must have a decision from quasi judicial process. And in a staff report, you'll, you'll see often what we do is just kind of have the sample or example motions, the actual motion that you would just read, and usually based on the findings as presented in the staff report. It might be that they like the conditions as is, or it might be the motion maker has some suggested changes to the conditions that are proposed, maybe some additions or some modifications to the conditions that you would see in a draft form in the staff report. So that's really it for, for my part here on staff reports. Blue? Oh, get me outside. Okay, so what we're going to do now is switch gears and we are going to play, you are the chair, what would you do? So we have some scenarios, we only have six of them. But these scenarios are some that have occurred in the past. And so Tyler and I will tag team these. And what we're going to do is I'm going to read the first one and then Tyler will read the second one. But yeah, it's just a question of what would you do if you were the chair?
And this is meant to be fun. Scott and I are nerds, we love land use, so this is fun for us on that.
Could you like play some game show music?
Perfect, you guys did it for us. Or is that what you were trying to play earlier on your phone?
I'd be disappointed if you don't know what that's from.
I couldn't tell what it was.
You're fun enough.
Oh, oh, that was from Supernatural. Yeah, that's great.
I have not watched all of Supernatural, but I do know.
Okay, so I'm just going to read this scenario and the scene is we're at the commencement of the public hearing, at the very beginning of a public hearing. And the chair asks the commissioner or counselors, in this case, if they have any bias, ex parte contact, conflict of interest or site visits to declare. One council member responds by disclosing a longstanding friendship with the applicant. Upon hearing this, you as the chair promptly ask counselors about the ability to exercise fairness and impartiality. The counselor responds by saying, yes, I can be fair and impartial. I also thought about recusing myself, but I'm concerned that my friend's proposal will not receive the true fairness and impartiality it deserves from other council members. So I'm not stepping down. As a chair, what would you do?
Chair, move somebody? Can a chair move somebody legally? You brought this game show.
And that's a good question, it's not come up.
That's not my answer, so don't, we can move on. I was just curious.
I would like the answer to be yes.
I don't think there is though.
I'm worried that that's truly where it would happen, but yes, I would be disappointed. I would, I mean, to be totally honest, I wouldn't defend you guys if you, well, assuming this was inappropriate and this individual refused to step down, I have no issue on the record in public saying you need to recuse yourself and not participate. I will not defend your bad decisions if I can help it.
Would we be able to ask this person, why do you think, what makes you think that we wouldn't be impartial? You know, because.
I think you have, I think you have to ask that question because his accusation that we are being impartial, makes him impartial.
Okay, you need to recuse yourself.
Well, you're usually like, what would make you somebody have that feeling on this particular case is your friend as opposed to having any other time? The fact you're trying to do that right now with your best friend makes me kind of go, you have a vested interest in me, like you have, you have some stake in the game, buddy.
Yes.
One of the things that, most councils operate on Robert's Rules order, and I don't know if it's problems above the board, or if that's in the, oh, the charter or just as part of the bylaws maybe that the council has.
Civil procedures.
Okay, so yeah, they might be right in there. Robert's Rules talks about a lot of point of orders and things like that. And it's a matter of being respectful to your fellow council members and things like that. So I mean, that's kind of one idea here, kind of steering away from what the land use answered to all of this. But yeah, it, obviously this person is not speaking for this. The question when the chair asks about all of these disclosures, it is a question that's asked to each and every one of you and solely your, your response and not speaking for others. So that might be a matter of reminding that person, that individual, if they were so rude to do this, as to the responsibility they have to be respectful to their fellow council members. So, any other, I mean, that's, yep, that it, there's no trick answer or right answer to this one, we're just kind of bringing it up.
Yeah, you're trying to see who we are as people, it's fun.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll go to the next one.
I'm just really happy that you guys all participated in that because often it's hard to get participation. So thank you.
Steve, just try to mention.
Second scenario, at the commencement of a public hearing, the chair asks counselors if they have any bias, ex parte contact, conflict of interest or site visits. One counselor reveals, having just received. One counselor reveals having just received a text message from a friend who lives near the project site that is subject to the hearing. The counselor explains how the friend had planned to to testify tonight, but is unable to do so, having been rushed to the hospital for emergency care. The counselor then states, under the circumstances, it only feels right for me to help my friend. I have her notes in my phone, what she planned to say tonight. My friend should be provided an opportunity to testify. What should I do? You know, as the chair, counselor Gould, what would you do? And you were pretty quiet last scenario.
I was shaking my head. I was gonna ask the same question that Tetra did, so I was shaking my head. For that, I mean, it kind of be, I'd say it'd be kind of impartial because the notes are forwarded from that person that's in the hospital. So I would say almost. Kind of like when I applied to be on the city council where we had somebody that couldn't make it to the thing, the. Not the session to go over all the applicants, but we can look at the application, but. It doesn't give it that same, not appeal, but uh.
It doesn't have much weight, as if they were there, but still getting the information.
Plus then somebody could add their own feedback in that is impartial. So I would look at it with a grain of salt and keep it open mind to. Possibly have to postpone judgments, I guess you'd say. Um to see if that person can make it to the next hearing. And then if not. I think that's where I would go.
It's a better thought out answer than I probably would have given if we had swapped chairs.
If the chair asked him to go ahead and recuse himself to become a member of the audience at that point, means he wants to speak on behalf of his friend? Will that also be?
Yeah, that's what I would suggest. Yeah, that I, that's also a possibility.
Or just to not, just say, this is my ex parte contact. This is what, you know, this is my information that I've received. Um I'm still wanna sit here, but I, this person would like to testify. And I'm gonna give their testimony for someone else to.
Just yeah, have it presented.
Correct.
I have more issues with this actually. Um just. If someone were to say, we have someone else to present the information, I think I'd be, I might be okay with that. But this scenario is listed, the person which emergency care, they contacted them. And that other person on whose on the commission already had their notes in their phone, which means they discussed the wire. Consequently, it sounds like they had a long conversation.
He has the eye on this one.
So I'd be like, hey, if you know, we've noticed that you guys obviously talked about it, can you be impartial? I I I really question whether we're putting ourselves on the legal hook, as I might say, because you had all these notes before.
That's why I kind of suggested that they step down.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I I I mean, I'd be adamant, actually, probably.
Yeah, the concern, I'm looking at the fact that they, like you said, you got the notes, but it's a counselor that's wanting to see if it's not a resident.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So somebody is actually just looking part of the hearing. I don't believe they should. Besides that, it says notes. Well, I could type all sorts of notes on my phone, give it sent to you wherever it is. I mean, if it's not signed, it's not documents, you know, it can't be pretended to the council really. I don't think it should be to be able to use like that.
Answered, no, sir.
Yeah, final answer.
Are we having fun yet?
We're we're doing, before we move on to the next one, yeah, it it is, yeah, unfortunately, all of these phones that cause a lot more problems these days. Uh but it is, we live in an electronic world and it is very possible for the council member to forward it into. Uh whoever's acting as the recorder for the evening and that that person can forward it also to uh council members officially. So it is a matter that can easily uh be made part of the record. So there there is a solution kind of for this one where uh yeah, the, it would be appropriate for the council member to say. All right, I've got this instance, it's written, it's here, I have to disclose that. Uh but also has the opportunity to still sit at the dais there and uh to share what's on the phone there. Make it part of the testimony. Is part of the procedures for all of the uh vocal uh oral uh testimony. Uh the script uh that the mayor has uh then says, okay, staff, is there any written testimony? Sometimes that's when we uh we say, okay, yeah, that that all of that is done for oral, let's go into the written testimony. And that's an opportunity for us to kind of uh provide you anything. You're going to provide it as part of the staff report. If it's timely, it's included, that written testimony is included with the staff report. Uh if it's not, then we just read it right there. So is it my turn on this one or is that next one?
Uh your turn.
My turn.
Okay, that was, by the way, Jess, that was a really good catch. The fact that knows we're already on the phone, that feels like some like CSI.
She could have texted into her.
They're pointing the emergency room.
I.
Maybe she emailed into her or something.
Email somebody else.
Or we're just doing it on teams. Or join our, join our insecure teams.
Okay, uh third scenario here, this is one uh where somebody says, hey, I didn't receive a notice. And so the scene is uh hearing is open, period of public testimony. And the situation, a person uh first to testify uh is testifying in opposition. And he's upset about not receiving a notice in the mail about the hearing. And the person explains, I only learned about this project yesterday through my neighbor who received a notice. As the chair, uh you've asked the staff planner for the mailing affidavit. And the planner staff provides that and the name, person's name, address is shown on there. And so you, as the chair, you explain to the person, gee, we looks, looks like we nailed it appropriately there. And then the person replies, well, that doesn't mean I received the notice. So as the chair, what would you do with that?
All that has been, didn't receive, but it was definitely sent out.
Our responsibility that you did not receive it, the responsibility is to provide the notice and give you ample amount of time. We have done that.
That that's, that's pretty much the quick answer for for that.
I thought you said there was no wrong answers, like, like.
Then there is state law that speaks to uh the failure not to receive uh a a notice does not uh come to the proceedings. It doesn't mean that uh we bet I call off everything because the person didn't receive it. Uh the irony here is the person is testifying.
Yeah, but my thought would be exactly like, well, you're here, so I'd love to hear your opinion. Let's, let's hear it.
Yeah, that's what our answer is.
When was the last time you checked your mail?
Or the dog ate it or something.
Well, check your mail.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's pretty much, but you will hear it eventually if you stay on council long enough, you'll hear somebody say that I didn't receive this. And then it wasn't. Down.
They'll mail it out in bylaws also.
That was not a public meeting.
I'm just. Okay, yeah, I'm just saying, well, you've heard it. I'm not saying it's correct. You heard it.
That's very triggering. Uh scenario number four, the hearing is open, period of public testimony. The second person to testify in opposition to the project conveys a need for presenting additional arguments and so states. I hereby request that this hearing be continued. And they always say the same. Upon hearing this, you ask the staff planner, how much time remains on the state mandated processing clock of one hundred and twenty days? Polly replies, we're at day one hundred and sixteen of one hundred and twenty. Applying quick math, you realize that the one hundred and twenty day clock will expire in four days. And the minimum period required by state law for leaving the record open is seven days, which is true, by the way. That's not like a a trick reference to a fake law that we threw in there. Uh as the chair, what would you do?
Just could remind them that state law requires seven days. You don't have enough time, sorry.
Nice.
Well.
We could also ask the applicant to voluntarily instead.
Yeah, that there is kind of a little bit of a person, uh so they're able to stop and start. There's a little bit of squirreliness here, unfortunately. I know it's kind of one that it's sort of a paradox. Uh there is, if somebody requests that the record be uh made open or or continue. There is an obligation to the the city to either do one of the two. It's a, you know, to either uh let the the record stay open for seven days. Or to continue. In this case, there's just really not a lot of time to continue the the hearing unless the council wants to eat the following day. Sometimes that is possible and sometimes it's not, but everybody schedules, but that is kind of a quick uh meeting. I always gotta say the big time for everybody uh that's attending uh that, that's important. Uh but also, as as Tyler mentioned, more often it's the case of the applicant saying, yeah, I'll give a partial waiver of that one twenty days. That's most often what the applicant is willing to do if if asked uh under a circumstance like that. Fortunately, most cases we don't get to the ones that that uh that uh timeframe there, so usually it's not.
So we try very soon to avoid the time grab situation.
So it's, I'm sort of.
Presenting additional arguments, wouldn't he have them, the able person that run that day?
Should, they should. Let's say he is the interviewer.
Right, the second person, I mean, presenting additional arguments, wouldn't he have them already? Maybe.
You might not.
Yeah, we probably don't gather arguments like at that point, like if you've heard this, you just go on.
Right, if you're not, not necessarily a sympathetic.
In in reality, though, you're talking about having to request that the applicant makes the extension. And if the person who says he has arguments against it, why would the applicant want to create an extension?
Now, sometimes applicants are surprisingly uh. Flexible is maybe not quite exactly the right word, but they're willing to sort of play along with the process to not unnecessarily.
Like, yeah, I think this kind of ties into the next one I'm about to read, but like, if the applicant believes that they're, it's gonna get approved after this thing, then why not just go ahead and say? It's being, it's like, we don't, we don't get our personal feelings into it, so I'm gonna be right, take care of your meetings, you're gonna have to anyways.
One of the things I will mention is a a really good cause for somebody requesting a continuance, somebody opposed to the project. Every once in a while, I see the applicant introduce new evidence to the record to which you have not received until the date of the hearing. Right there, maybe even as part of the oral presentation. And it's sort of like, oh. And somebody who's really good and knowledgeable about due process may in that case say, this is new. I didn't have the opportunity to review it. And that's a really good cause for for saying, that's kind of the the basis of why there are these. Uh rules to speak to uh allowing uh a continuance when somebody says the magic words. I hereby request that the hearing be continued. So um that happens, the sometimes, yeah, the the applicant wants to submit something at the last moment and gee, I haven't had the opportunity to do it.
Which is also annoying for us.
Do I have the next one or do?
Yeah.
Okay, we're getting close to the end here. Okay.
And we are having fun. You guys are smiling everyone. Polly chuckled a little bit.
Okay, so this is a hearing is open, it's now the applicant's rebuttal period. So after all of the testimony that is uh offered, the applicant gets an opportunity to rebut what has been stated. And so the situation is uh that the applicant uh addressing the council here on rebuttal says um. Uh all testimony has been emotional, irrational and reactionary. My housing project meets all clear objective code criteria standards. Uh the staff report indicates so. Opposition testimony has not addressed these standards. Therefore, you are obligated under R S uh and your code to approve it. Uh one counselor is not hap- happy with this uh this and says, we're not obligated to approve anything. This is a privilege to develop in our town. I'm voting no because you have not shown any respect. So you are the chair, what would you do?
Because it's one night, whatever.
If we can't kick him off, I'd be like, well, he's right, they're all things. You can vote no, but you're under doing your obligation. We're gonna all go yes, that's the most good. Because that's just, yeah. Why are you saying I'm gonna vote yes? So like, you're at your council person.
Very productive.
When I'm looking at, just council, I think it would be. But I I think the first thing I'd wanna look at is like, okay, legal counsel, just put me staying corrected. I want to first find out if this is, how's this, is it a yes or no?
Right, they they really need all the like these rules requirements and goals, because I know lots of big ones they have to be. Words set for land use. Uh so again, if you like, that may be true.
Thanks for being.
Yeah, we have to check that stuff for the G P. That's what I appear to begin with in the state records. I would cast all those. Yeah.
So very often the staff report before you would say, yes, we've checked it off and the staff's opinion is that the project. It's all applicable uh criteria and standards. Uh you could certainly ask what staff is before you. You could, in your own review of these standards, you can ask questions of staff. So yes, you're able to 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 do that. Uh and somebody presenting testimony, most all the time is emotional testimony that you get. Uh it's just been my experience that uh, you know, sometimes people say, hey, uh yeah, I I I I'm looking at criteria such and such. And I don't believe that they have that. This, uh but uh yeah, um assuming they need the clear and objective standards. And it's a housing project with a lot of protections under under state law. Uh there there's a lot of truth to what the person is saying, you know, although not in a polite manner. Uh importantly here, the 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 bias is being shown here by.
The bias is definitely.
That's a bias, so that's the 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 um, the difficult part is just kind of holding back your your emotions. Even when you get somebody, an applicant who is not respectful to you, it's uh just uh. Not not illustrating what what this scenario is is doing here, where somebody vocalizes something. All of a sudden shows the bias and the meeting's still occurring, it's very possible where the developer could say, I don't want counselor so and so on. That showing the bias, we would request that this person reduce, reduce themselves. So anyways.
Yeah, that was pretty real.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Scenario number six, hearing is closed, time for deliver, oh. So I don't want to get this on television. Deliberation begins with the counselor explaining how the applicant's plans do not show the place where receptacles for recycling will be stored. And how the code was amended last year to require these receptacles, including standards for size, dimensions, enclosure, et cetera. The counselor continues to explain how staff is at fault for deeming the application complete. When the code clearly requires recycling areas to be shown on a site plan. And how it would be premature to decide on this project until more information is known about this topic. As the chair, what would you do?
Andrew, go, go.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, continue on, yeah, and uh the.
You're not country.
She, she the other.
I I I didn't probably say the news. I know the staff was called, but nobody knows the situation, why we're one. You don't, you don't attack your own personnel in public.
Unless they're stupid.
From here a few years ago, yeah, still, it's, it's unprofessional. You don't bring the staff to you, you don't make excuses, you don't say there's inconsistencies that were noticed somewhere on the lines when you do the rest of the fix, it's so happened.
However, would you do that in public? I mean, we're not making decisions, I think, to her point, you use the contingent. Turquoise used the contingency, then you have a discussion with the council member.
Yeah.
You have to hear.
And oftentimes in these, in in a situation like this, I mean, to, if if that was a code requirement, there was a staff report saying, yes, all the criteria are met. And there weren't any plans that showed where the recycling would be located. Very, very likely, there would be a condition of approval that says before some step in the process, what, before construction, before you did a building permit, whatever. Applicant will submit a site plan that shows, you know, the location of recycling receptacles in conform. So the completeness doesn't necessarily mean that the applicant has provided 100% of the documentation and information that will get us through the entire project process, but we've at least laid out the steps to receive that information at a point in the process where it's appropriate.
Yeah, just a couple of things where that scene is here. The hearing is closed and deliberation. It would have been more appropriate for the counselor to ask, to learn to notice something early on as opposed to after the hearing is closed. Deliberation should be a period of time when you consider everything that's been said by the public, by the applicant. And it's it's talking about what you have, all of the facts at that particular time, and not introducing something new, like, hey, recycling. And Tyler is also correct, is it something that can be resolved, something as simple as, well, how about if we just enclose the door? It's gotta go some trash and recycling gotta go somewhere. Is there, or maybe the applicant has a quick answer for that, it needs to be resolved, but, yeah, there might be a quick area to sell an extra parking space that if they have a surplus, that turns into where the recycling will go. So that that, that's something that could be asked and answered very easily. And and structured condition too, you have the ability to to modify conditions of approval that come in a draft form before your staff reports. And that's it for the scenarios.
I think Rick had an example.
Oh, don't you dare. Well, number seven. You are chair, what would you do? I was the chair.
This sounds like story time.
It was me. I was very sure what council was sitting in a hearing on an appeal in the planning commission. We were in quasi judicial hearing. An applicant of some infamacy of the Sherwood community, last name Claus, first name not Santa. Was appealing a planning commission decision. And it was before the council. I was there, I was presiding officer. And there was a barmer regular council meeting, so about, we took a break and we came back in. Yeah, did the regular council stop, came back in, took a break. Then the parties all arrived, attorneys, staff, and the applicant, and it started a significant controversial land use hearing on appeal. And unbeknownst to me, the attorney for the applicant was my administrative law professor. Going for four years, I've done work for him, I've done contract work for him. And I was not aware of this friend of mine, well-known land use attorney by the name of Ed Sullivan, was actually the representing the applicant. I had no, no bias against the guy, he gave me a minus. Favor, but.
Not good at that.
I mean, I was growing dark good. But, you know, did I have a bias? Well, not really. But I also felt it would not be appropriate not to make public the relationship, the knowledge, the fact that I knew this guy. And so, you know, but I felt I could still participate and 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 vote. So what I did do was declare my potential bias and conflict based upon my awareness, knowledge, and friendship of opposing counsel. We haven't done some contract work for him in a while. Four years. But I felt that I could still sit in judgment for this case. And I did it feels appropriate for me to resign. And as my council president dropped his job, I ended up able to do it. And so I will excuse myself from resigning, but I will vote and participate unless there is objection from the party. So I gave them the opportunity to object to my continued participation. I did participate, I did speak a little bit, which I usually do. And I did vote, and the appeal was upheld, I was boiling my boat. So I voted, I did my majority. But again, this is about, and sometimes this is about playing defense. We don't want to provide opportunities to question the clarity of our decision making. The council land use, we don't want to provide opportunities where if somebody at a later date, I've heard about the fact, the mayor who produced and done stuff from the moment, you know, that brings disdain on our decisions, that brings disdain upon organization, and it puts us in front of those who believe about or other illegal people who want to, because this guy, this developer guy, he would have challenged. That's just the way it's operating. So some of this is precautionary, which is why we're doing this tonight rather than what we planned to do. But I wanted to share that, yes, I was chair, and that was how I resolved it, and it's been a few years since then, so I assume it's all peace. Professor Fred is retired about 10 years ago. I talked to him the other day about it. Shared with him what's going on, right? A little bit. But this is why I'm being careful and considerate, staying within the parameters that you have in your capacity as commissioners. And we don't want one from there. Because we wander out on the floor. It is what.
The case could be a little up. Which is impressive, I will say, Ed Sullivan is the land use guru in Oregon. He's the example that everybody says is the person you don't want to go against, because he went before and wrote the book on him. So congratulations, Rick, on taking it down, David versus White.
I felt that if I gave them the right to object, that gave me a clinch, like. I want to point out, there was no question, he said, what would we do? He never asked us, he just.
Well, yeah, that's why I said, of course, this sounds more like.
Well, not what would you do, but I do. But if you have to ask what I've done, just like you, I've done just like. True story.
One, one scenario that runs through my head, mostly scenarios only talk about possibly one council person having to recuse themselves and step down and be out there. What happens when there's multiple?
He's taking these.
Yes, yes.
Go on.
What, did I answer? No.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I did, one of the things that I didn't get in the slide there or not, but it's always nice to kind of know. I I've seen it before where a counselor will call or finding commissioner and say, I'm not going to show up to the hearing because I'll have to, you know, recuse myself. So coming to the, coming to the dais and roll call at the beginning there, that's a core. So you have, a meeting can start with the the minimum number that's required, so that that's one of the things that we still guard against. If you do have something that you're ready to disclose at a particular meeting, please still come. That's one of the things, at least I've encountered in the past. And then, yeah, you can step down, but but that way the the meeting can still, can 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 go forward. Even though you've stepped down, I think that there is like a minimum number necessary to to make a decision, I don't know if that is in the but I I have seen that before, where somebody comes to make sure there's enough quorum, and then there is still a majority there. Have to kind of check to see what the, what the code says.
You have follow-up, Jesse?
No.
Sometimes your expressive face makes me think.
Well, I initially had a follow, because I was like, are you telling me we can have everybody here and five people accusing something? You know, we want this here, whatever, but then he said, I think there's a minimum, I'm not sure what it is, and so my question was rendered or a useful or not answerable at this time. I'm really tired.
Question based on like what we're gonna be answering in a couple of weeks. We all live here in town, and we all drive by. We can't really miss it.
I actually don't.
Well, I mean. Excited. A lot of people.
I turned before I get there.
Drive out or come across us being on council. Do we have to disclose that? We drive in front of it. Everybody, or we have kids that go to the schools.
Yeah, I think, I think all of those are good things to disclose, and I also don't believe anything are disqualifying. So it's just get, kind of like Ricky's saying, get it all out there, even if it's not really a thing when it comes into it.
Another part of it too is a lot of us voted for this bond, that they are also, so we also have what was written in the bond that we don't know. Like, is that also considered possibly a bias of knowing what was written, written in the bond? That we all had the opportunity to vote for as well?
I don't even know what we're discussing yet, so it's hard to answer, like, I imagine if you felt like it was if you, if you felt like there was something in the bond that they had said previously that they are now going back on, I would say that you have outside perspective, your perspective is a scheme.
Well, I was just asking in general, I didn't have like other outside information, I'm just.
I understand, but like.
Different than, than a bias.
Yeah, I was just like, if public information is what we've read, do we need to disclose that public information out there?
Well, just because information is public information doesn't mean it has to get disclosed, but the fact that the bond was passed 12 months ago and this application.
Is now, there's a difference?
Right.
Okay.
Unless there is a more candid moment. Like, something in that information during that election specifically.
Okay, so it is impactful. And it might be like, maybe we were something.
I signed the staff report today, it's a technical, I think it's to be a state. First of all, signing, so anything, anything, it's mattered before, there's everything once. So it's, it's today.
Once, once the application is complete, right, so even though they put in the application, it's on the, it's, the time doesn't start until it's actually deemed complete, so if it was signed off as as complete, that's when they're having the start.
Those that started today, and then if we get any other information.
Well, the staff report, which is what is being appealed, is signed today. The applicant was complete 30 days ago, probably. But, well, we're not close to that crunch time. And it's really not about the crunch time, as it is about our courtesy of trying to move things along at appropriate speed for our partners.
For exceptional speed. Exceptional speed.
Yes.
Yeah, that was pretty much.
We, we signed that, we signed that staff report today.
Only Rick signed it.
We got this healed it, so.
We actually got notice of the appeal before they had the final staff decision.
Other questions, I mean, this is your opportunity. Two weeks from now, I just want you prepared to think about it, you can reach out to Tyler or me. Tyler, but you know, you're going to be playing a different role, and the rules are a little bit different on September 4th on these new business standards that we're going to have before you.
So like, for me, for example, my potential is that I'm an employee of the school district. And then I'm also a parent of of children that go to the school, is that what I would disclose as well? Because I have, I literally have kids in each school this year, you just, so just those and all that, but on a non-bias.
I think, because we don't want the content, I'll discuss that if it's a former employee. And depending on what is being brought up, to get to determine how much it would affect you. If you have, if it's like, oh, this makes a big deal to me and my family, then you want to let that big, it's often refused yourself, but if you, like, Rick was talking about his situation, all this stuff, it's true, but you still think it can be fair and impartial, then go for it.
You could have done this training, Jesse.
Yay.
That's kind of cool, because this is like a refresher, they went over a lot of this at the training session on the 30.
One-on-one.
I want you to call on Dr. D, he's so bad, you can go call him.
I've never made it either, and I don't think that.
I waited in the waiting room to be called out, and then they're like, oh, you're all dismissed to go.
No, I've never gotten that far, maybe he sent me a thing, and then like, oh, you don't do it for a time.
A lot of poor.
Yep.
I want, I want a murder shot.
The four weeks.
Soon as I hear I'm.
So like, ow.
Yeah.
Obvious list.
By the way, the only thing I want to say is, it was entertaining, thank you, the most entertaining part for me though was slide number 11 and 14. You actually put your own cartoon character in there.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
That. No, no, I was thinking, I was thinking more like numbers 27, the contractor, the mustache.
Scott gave this. That kind of looks like you. Oh, the 27 has the appropriate expression. And stash. Rick, wait, Rick, did you want to?
You have a draft pre-ification on the questions to submit. Let me discuss them, I would appreciate any comments or concerns you have. That is what we put in the newsletter. On goal setting session. Take a look at it, get back.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's 8:30, thanks, and we are adjourned. It's pretty gone.
Proud of you.
Thank you, thank you for that, awesome, everything well said.
Yeah, good, good.
I was ready. I mean, I like that.
I do too, it was hard, it's a flavor, but gives it a nice place to, but it's also.
I'm not even talking to the test, right?
Yes, it is.
And not everybody is driving always, yeah.
I'm excited, so I'm going to.
I could tell that from there.
So that's probably, Emma's probably this not called. So my wife.
I gotta go home to my kids.
I use her.
Trying to close out, release button far right.
I did.
They didn't, yeah.